Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodian Moors Premium, I'm Tay Kahlarun. The acronym is AMPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Consul of Court. Today is Class 56, Class 56. What did we learn in Class 55? Well, we were finishing up with Chapter 1 of the Act of Algeciras of 1906. And what did we learn in Chapter 1? We learned a lot about Chapter 1, right? First things first, Chapter 1 is an extension of the preamble. And the preamble sets up the obligations of both Moors, the Sultan, and the colonists. In Chapter 1, we learned that the Sultan was trying to reign in the order, that the Sultan summoned, summoned all the other colonial powers to Morocco, right? That way he gathered discussion with them on how to put in what's called reforms, right? Legislation, which is the convention of the Act of Algeciras, which set forth the treaty itself, and treaty is the supreme law of the land. So therefore, in Chapter 1, we immediately started understanding who are the parties set forth. Well, we understand that the parties were set forth not only in the preamble, right? But it also started talking about the parties in Chapter 1, Article 8. And in Chapter 1, Article 8, it starts to talk about the Sultan, the Empire, and more specifically, the Moors government, that's also known as the Sharifian Authority. Keep in mind, the Sharifian Authority is like saying the Shadif, the Shadif, right? The sheriffs have the authority, and it's the police. So police is just a connotative term for Shadif, right? So we started understanding in Chapter 1, was that the Sultan, the first thing he wanted to do was reign in the order of law. He had already established statehood, because he informed everyone to bring to the table all of their constitutions, that way he could verify whether everybody was the competent authority. Everyone was the Minister of Plenipotentiary to have the authority to be a signatory power to sign off on that treaty. So therefore, the Sultan made sure everybody was the competent authority. Then the Sultan went right into understanding how to reign in the order, and the order starts with law. Everything's about interior domain, once you verify everybody has a state. The Sultan went right into the second box, the triple principle, to start talking about the police, i.e. the Shadif, i.e. the legislation that governs each state in the Empire of Morocco. So what we learned in Chapter 1, Article 8, is that the Sultan, he immediately understood that he wanted the Moors to oversee all the authority of the Empire. Why is that? You must understand that the Sultan understood that he was just an administrator overseeing the Moors Empire. He understood that. If you go back and study the Kingdom of Morocco, even the Sultan over there today, or should I say the King of the Kingdom of Morocco, who's no longer Sultan, understand there are two different nations right there even in the Kingdom of Morocco. What's the other nation other than the Moroccans that are there? Is what you call the Berbers, but the Berbers is a connotative linguistic. Who are the indigenous people that refer themselves as the Amazai people, the Amazai? So therefore, when you look at the Act of Algeciras, you see the word Mazin. Understand the word Mazin is just another spinoff of the word Amazai people, the original government of Morocco, right? So therefore, you've got two different nations right there in the Kingdom of Morocco. You have the people who have been branded as Berbers, and then you've got the Moroccans who call themselves more or less the Arabs that are overseeing the Moors Empire. So in Chapter 1, what we're learning immediately is the obligation of Moors to oversee the treaties. So, when we started Article 8, it immediately starts to point out foreign citizens, subjects, and proteges. And whose job was to oversee those persons and property? Moors governments. In the treaty, in Chapter 1, Article 8, does it say enforce the Constitution of the United States of America on the foreign citizens? Or does it say enforce the treaty? It says conformity to treaties, that's the supreme law of the land. So if that's the case, you're not enforcing the Constitution of the United States of America or the United States Constitution, you're enforcing what? Your well-served principles of the supreme law of the land, which is the treaty, alright? That's what we have to take away from Chapter 1. Chapter 1 is reigning in the order. Alright, what else did we learn in Class 55? We start now going to Chapter 2, right? Immediately, we started learning about Chapter 2 is about the contraband and the controlling of arms. And once again, we're understanding the obligation is on Moors state governments, the competent authority of Moors state governments to control the arms, right? What type of arms? Well, we got arms of war, and you've got arms that are just for sport. So we'll continuously read in Chapter 2 about the obligations of Moors. Speaking of the obligations of Moors, what are we really studying right now? We're studying what's called a delegation of authority orders. We're studying the delegation of authority orders. And the authority is upon who? The authority is upon the Moors state governments. And the Moors state governments have an order, they have been ordained when enforcing the treaties. So therefore, as I've told you in previous videos, is the Moors who have delayed their own justice, because it was the Moors' obligations to maintain their own delegation of authority orders. And we have not been following orders. If that means we haven't followed orders, that means we've been actually outlawed because we haven't been following our own law. That's what Moors have to understand. We have to get back into the conformity of the treaties, because that is the delegation of authority orders. So let's go ahead and keep reading about the orders that's been set forth for Moors to follow through with. We must be in conformity of our own treaties, alright? Okay, get into Class 56. As you already know, AMPAC always opens up about constitution, this is AMPAC's constitution, as an example, all the Moors need their own constitution. The constitution sets forth an opportunity for Moors maybe to return to a Moors state government, right? A Moroccan government. Without the constitution, Moors can't return to a government. This is what you call the counterintelligence game that the United States and the United States of America has been playing on the Moors. They've kept the Moors from being able to establish their own Moors state governments. They have branded the Moors as what? Losing their nationality, yes, we know this, but what did they really do? They removed us from our nation, and what's the nation? The state. Now, Moors are coming back into statehood with their own constitutions. Without the constitution, you cannot return to Morocco to consent to a Moroccan state government. So the first step that the Moors have to do is establish constitutions in each of the territories. Moors gotta go back and study, it's called uti possidatus juris. Utti possidatus juris. Utti possidatus juris. What does that mean? The Moors have every right under what's called succession, right? Moors are now taking over the border lines of each one of the colonial states, right? So all those colonial states that the United States is claiming as their 50 states, all of them have borders, right? Internal borders. The Moors get to take over those borders, right? Through what? Urgha honest principles, posthumine per consanguinity, right? Utti possidatus juris territory, right? Under succession, right? We're the succeeding state, but we're succeeding the colonial states under what's called decolonization. And that's exactly what Moors are doing, we're decolonizing Morocco, alright? That must be understood, alright, let's move on. Okay, so this is the Act of Algeciras, 1906, Chapter 2. As Moors already know, in Class 55, we read Articles 13 through 18. We're gonna read the Articles, six Articles at a time, approximately 18 Articles in Chapter 2. So we read the first six, obviously as a refresher, we're gonna go back through it. So we get back to Article 13, we were going through that in Class 55, we're breaking it down to show the authority that Moors have, okay? So what we're going to do is, um, I'll go ahead and start the reading for Chapter 2 just as, as we left off in Class 55, right? Because we already had to make sure I'd read Articles 13 through 18. So now I'll go ahead and complete the reading and start to do the discernment, right? Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. So, Chapter 2 of the Act of Algeciras, 1906. It's about the regulations concerning the detection and repression of the contraband of arms. So we're quickly realizing that this is about controlling arms, both arms of war and arms of sport, okay? Alright, so let's go ahead and get into Article 13. Article 13. Throughout the Sharifian Empire, which is the Moors Empire, except in the cases specified by Articles 14 and 15, the importation and sale of forbidden arms of war, parts of guns, ammunition of any nature, loaded or unloaded, powder, saw peter, gun cotton, nitro glycerin, and all composition destined exclusively for the manufacture of ammunition. So as we already know, in Class 55, we broke this down, right? The Moors must understand Article 13 is very important, because it immediately lets you know that the Moors have the obligation to oversee all these weapons, right? Any type of weapons, whether they're weapons of war or they're weapons of sport, alright? We have a delegation of authority and the order to oversee the contraband of arms, right? Alright, let's continue. Article 14. Such explosives as are necessary for industry and public works may however be introduced. A regulation drawn up in a manner indicated by Article 18 shall determine the conditions under which their importation may be affected, uh, affected, excuse me, may be affected. So what we're gonna do is, since they're mentioning Article 18, let's go ahead and jump down and read Article 18, because it's giving specific instructions as it relates to Article 14, okay? So we're gonna read Article 18, then we'll come back to Article 14, that will be have a basic understanding of what they're trying to explain, okay? So let's go down to Article 18. Alright, so Article 18. Article 18. The trade in sporting and high-priced arms, not rifles, of foreign manufacturer as well as the ammunition pertaining to the same, shall be regulated as soon as circumstances permit by a Sharifian decision made in conformity with the advice of a majority of the diplomatic body at Tangier. This shall be the case as well with decisions intended to suspend or restrict the exercise of such trade. Only such persons as have secured a special and temporary license from the Moors government shall be allowed to open and operate retail shops for the sale of sporting guns and ammunition. Continue. This license shall only be given at the written request of the applicant endorsed by his legation. Regulations drawn up in a manner indicated by the first paragraph of this article shall determine the number of such retail shops which may be opened at Tangier and, if occasion arises, in the ports that may be later designated. They shall fix the formalities to be imposed on the importation of explosives intended for industry and public works of arms and ammunition intended to supply such shops, as well as the maximum quantity of stock that can be kept. In case of the violation of the regulating ordinances, the license may be temporarily or permanently withdrawn without prejudice to other penalties incurred by the offenders. So what are we setting up in Article 18? The Moors delegation of authority orders to oversee both arms and ammunition, as well as what? The licenses and permits that Moors governments have a delegation of authority orders to oversee, right? So immediately, what are we learning in Article 18? Let's, let's take a look at the Moors. So we're talking about the Act of Algeciras, 1906. We're talking about Chapter 2, Articles 13 through 30, alright? What is Chapter 2 about? Chapter 2 is about the competent Moors state governments repression of contraband arms of war and arms of sport, right? What else is Chapter 2 about? It's about the competent Moors governments enacting legislation to govern the permits and licenses of the foreigners, subjects, and proteges throughout the Empire of Morocco. That's what Article 18 is about, that we just finished reading. It is the obligation of Moors to control arms, arms of war and arms of sport. It's our obligation to issue the licenses and permits. And at times, it's also our obligations to do what? To suspend, terminate those same licenses and permits, right? So like I've always told the Moors, she who controls the land controls its laws and its wealth. So Chapter 2 is letting you know how to control the land. How do you control the land? Through legislation, through legation, through licenses, through permits, right? That's what we're learning about Article 18 already, is it relates to arms. It is the Moors' obligation. It is your delegation of authority orders to oversee arms. That's what we gotta take away from Article 18, alright? So let's go ahead and scroll back up to Article 14, now that we've read 18. Alright, so let's read Article 14 again. Such explosives as are necessary for industry and public works may however be introduced. A regulation drawn up in a manner indicated by Article 18 shall determine the conditions under which their importation may be affected. So what is Article 14 telling you? It's about Moors overseeing the arms and issuing licenses and permits for any imports that's coming in of arms as well as exports that's going out. And the usages, the usages of those arms in Morocco. How those arms used, right? Because they're being sold through what? Distribution centers? And they're being sold through what? Your sporting retail shops, right? As well as military arms are being sold, right? So the Moors have a, have a delegation of authority orders to control contraband and also to control the legalized sale and usage of arms. That's where the permits and the licenses come in, alright? Let's continue. Article 15. The arms, parts of guns and ammunitions intended for the troops of His Sharifian Majesty will be admitted after the fulfillment of the following formalities. A declaration signed by the Moors Minister of War. As I've told the Moors, as we read these articles, every time you see the word Moors, you should make a little mark, right? Approximately, the word Moors mentioned approximately 43 times to let you know who has the delegation of authority orders in this contract, right? That's why I have it highlighted, so Moors can see that this is a Moors treaty. So, Paragraph 2. A declaration signed by the Moors Minister of War describing the number and nature of such articles ordered abroad must be presented to the legation of the country of their origin, whose visas shall be affixed thereto. The passage through the customs of the case and packages containing the arms and munitions delivered at the order of the Moors government shall be effective upon the presentation. Number 1 of the aforementioned declaration, and number 2 of the invoice indicating the number and weight of the packages and the number and kind of arms and munitions contained therein. This document must be visaed by the legation of the country of their origin, which shall, which will mark on the back as successive amounts previously passed through the customs. This visa will be refused when the order shall be entirely delivered. So what's happening in Article 15? Article 15 is now issuing arms to the Moors. Now, don't get me wrong, the Moors nationalists, right? So let's read it. Article 15. The arms, parts of guns, and ammunitions intended for the troops of His Sharifian Majesty will be admitted after the fulfillment of the following formalities. So the formalities is what? You're putting together legislation that's giving the Moors now their sovereign authority, its sovereign power to oversee the arms, as well as the Moors are being equipped with arms, okay? You see that in Article 15? So therefore, the troops, right? The troops, which is the soldiers, right? The militia, the Shadifs of His Sharifian Majesty will be admitted after the fulfillment of the following formalities. So it's arming the Moors. You see that? That's what's happening in Article 15, okay? That's what Moors have to understand. In Chapter 2, how do you reign in the order? You must control it through what? Laws, courts, and you must have some type of law enforcement to enforce those laws, alright? So there's a declaration being signed by the Moors Minister of War describing the number and nature of such articles ordered abroad must be presented to legation of the country of their origin, whose visas shall be affixed thereto. So therefore, understanding Article 15, the basic understanding is the Moors are now coming back into the sovereign authority, the delegation of authority to oversee and command the armies and to oversee and command the police, i.e. the Shadifs, right? We're reigning in the order, that's what Moors gotta understand. Chapter 2 is about reigning in the orders and decolonizing the colonists. Moors are gaining arms, and the colonists are now being issued licenses and permits in order for them to have arms. You gotta see what's happening. This is decolonization. This is trying to control the colonization of what's going on in Morocco. That's what the Sultan's doing right now. Now, remember, this was written in 1906. You have to remember in the 1800s, that a lot of the Moors were what? Usurped, put into the subject status. And the Sultan now is trying to help the Moors to get back their reign of order, because the Sultan understood that colonists were just being belligerent and running all around the world, colonizing Moors everywhere, alright? So you gotta understand what's happening. Let's continue. Article 16. The importation of sporting and high-priced arms, parts of guns, cartridges, loaded and unloaded, is likewise forbidden. Why is it forbidden? You have to remember, only way for you to reign in the order, you have to control the weapons that's going on in your own land. This is why, unfortunately, in modern-day society right now, the United States and its several subsidiaries known as the several Union States, they're trying not to allow what they call their Negro blacks and colors, African-Americans and Moors Americans from having weapons. They're trying to control it, because you don't let your subjects have weapons. Let's use a connotative word such as slaves. Do you let slaves have weapons? No, that doesn't make sense, right? Because they're trying to overthrow you, right? So that's what's happening here, the Moors are getting their weapons back, while simultaneously what's happening? The colonists are losing their weapons, because the only way they can keep it is they have a permit, and who oversees it? Moors, okay? So right here, Article 16. The importation of sporting and high-priced arms, parts of guns, cartridges, loaded and unloaded, is likewise forbidden. It may, it may nonetheless be authorized, and this is how arms are authorized. Listen. One, for the strictly personal requirements of the importer for supplying the gun shops authorized by Article 18. Say I represent 18 again? And 18 is about what? Moors state governments issuing licenses and permits, and also having the ability to do what? Suspend or terminate those same licenses, alright? Article 17. Sporting and high-priced arms and the ammunition for the same will be admitted for the strictly personal requirements of the importer on presentation of a permit issued by the representation of the Mazin at Tangier. The Mazin is your Moors government, right? If the importer is a foreigner, this permit will only be granted at the request of his legation. So all the foreigners in Morocco need a permit. They need a license to have arms in Morocco. And whose obligation is to oversee it? Competent Moors state governments. Issuing licenses and permits, let's continue. With respect to ammunition for the sporting purposes, each permit shall allow a maximum of 1,000 cartridges or supplies necessary for the manufacture of 1,000 cartridges. The permit shall only be issued to those who have never been sentenced for any offense. So wait a minute. That last sentence. The permit, the permit shall only be issued to those who have never been sentenced for any offense. Now, you see why the United States tries to tell Negro blacks, colors, African-Americans, and Moors Americans, that they're not allowed to have weapons if they what? Have a record. You see, you see where the United States gets this verbiage from? Because the United States sees their citizens, i.e. their colors, as being who? Subjects. So they're forcing this treaty on subjects, to say subjects, if they have an offense, i.e. a record, they can have arms. You see what's happening? Okay, now let's reverse it. Now, the Moors state governments overseeing the treaty, the Moors state governments overseeing legation, i.e. the laws, policies, right? Rights of the state. Now, we start to govern to say who has arms and ammunition. We govern to say who has permits and licenses in Morocco. And we govern to see who has offenses, who's been sentenced, sentenced by a judge who has any offenses, right? That's the Moors' responsibility to oversee that, that's our delegation of authority orders. You see what's happening? This is the reason why the United States and the United States of America have to make sure you can understand your party name in the contract. They have to get you to understand that you were Negro, black, and colored, African-American, and Moors American, because none of those names exist in the treaty. It's about Moors state governments, about being competent, because the parties must be known in order to enforce a contract, you have to know who you are. And more importantly, you have to have the emanating documents, the paramount constitution that sets up the state in order for you to even enforce the treaty, because you have to accede to the treaty and make it a part of your eternal law, right? Let's continue. Article 18. The trade in sporting and high-priced arms, not rifles, of foreign manufacturer as well as of the ammunition pertaining to the same shall be regulated as soon as circumstances permit by a Sharifian decision, was that by a Moors decision, made in conformity with the advice of a majority of the diplomatic body at Tangier. This shall be the case as well with decisions intended suspended or restrict the exercise of such trade. You see that last sentence? That's important to understand. Moors get to do what? Moors. This shall be the case as well with decisions intended to suspend or restrict the exercise of such trade. So Moors have the right to oversee the trade, the trade routes, the customs, the ports, right? Going through customs, the ports. And what else is ports? As the United States would tell you under their Admiralty Law, all the ports, all their cities, their counties, right? Their boroughs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are ports, right? So, understanding that Moors have a right to suspend and restrict the exercise of such trade. So we control the trade routes of dealing with arms. That must be understood. All the imports and exports, alright? Let's continue. Only such persons as have secured a special and temporary license from the Moors government shall be allowed to open and operate. shall be allowed to open and operate retail shops for the sale of sporting guns and ammunition. Now you know, as Moors already know, you gotta get a license from the United States and their several states and their licenses and excise tax departments and they're always handing you a license. Well, guess what? When Moors now have their states, restore their states and they're controlling their jurisdiction, it is our obligation and our delegation of authority orders to issue permits to everyone else, that's including Moors nationals. So we issue permits to Moors nationals, we issue permits to foreigners, subjects and proteges. That must be understood, we have to reign in the order. Why is this so important to understand? Why did the Sultan have this as Chapter two? We have to look at the order, sequential order, how he's writing this. Chapter one about the police, chapter two is about controlling arms. You see, arms should only be used really for defense, not offense. This is the reason why this is controlling the arms because the colonists have always been on the offense. They've been usurping lands in order for them to steal the resources from Moors lands. So therefore, we have to control the arms. Why is the permits and the licenses important? Where number one, it controls the colonists, that way they can't overthrow the Moors empire again. Number two, we have to bring our states into a status of peace. You can't have peace when you're constantly having all of this genocide taking place. The colonists are performing genocide on us and unfortunately the unconscious Moors are performing genocide on ourselves, right? So we have to stop the genocide and the arms is a huge contributing factor to all the murders. Arms are supposed to be for defense, period, not offense, just for the hell of it. So we have to control, that way we can get back to the peace and prosperity, alright? Let's continue. Article eighteen. This license shall only be given at the written request of the applicant endorsed by his legation. So everyone has to have an application in order to get a permit and license. That's whether you're dealing with your Moors nationals or you're dealing with the foreigners or you're dealing with subjects and proteges of the United States. Everyone needs a license permit. That way we can track what's going on with arms because it is the arms, it is the arms Moors that's causing the pain of the world. The arms, the arms turn cowards into thinking they're tough guys. We gotta take, we gotta control the arms. Arms are for defense, not offense. Offense should be the last thing that you do. If you look at the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, eighteen thirty-six and seventeen eighty-seven, Article twenty-five, the last article talks about what? War, right? In times of war. But that should be the last case scenario, that's why it's the last article of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. It should be last case scenario. First thing you should try to get into is what's called mediation. That's what your consul relations is all about, that's what diplomatic relations is all about, is trying to effectively, effectively communicate. When mediation fails, you go into arbitration. What is arbitration? That's when you bring it to consul court. Then you have your adjudication, then the matter settle. But war should be the last case scenario. Let's continue. Regulations. Regulations drawn up in the manner indicated by the first paragraph of this article shall determine the number of such retail shops which may be opened at Tangier and of occasion arises in the ports that may be later designated. They shall fix the formalities to be imposed on the importation of explosives intended for the industry and public works of arms and ammunition intended to supply such shops as well as the maximum quantity of stock that can be kept. In the case of the violations of the regulating ordinances, right? So now we're learning if Moors nationals, foreign citizens of the United States, their subjects and their proteges violate the law, what law? The law of each Moors constitution, which is your internal law, as well as the treaty law, the legations, right? This is what happens next. In the case of violation of regulating ordinances, ordinances, the license may be temporarily or permanently withdrawn without prejudice to other penalties incurred by the offender, so this right here. So you already immediately are finding out that the license, right? The license may be temporarily or permanently withdrawn without prejudice to the other penalties incurred by the offender, so what's happening here? So, if a license can be suspended, a license can be withdrawn, but there's other offenses, et cetera, now it goes to what? A competent court to deal with this subject matter, alright? So that's what the violation is about, withdrawal, suspension of licenses, then eventually you get into some type of arbitration if in fact there's other offenses that took place, okay? So that's what we learned in the first six articles. We're understanding the delegation of authority orders of the Moors to oversee the license and permits of any type of arms, whether it's arms of war, arms of sport. But we're really learning also that contraband arms are forbidden. Contraband arms are forbidden. Contraband arms are forbidden. What makes it contraband? If you don't have a license or permit from the Moors state government to allow you the privilege of having it. Because arms have to be suppressed and oppressed in order to bring back peace on planet Earth, alright? Okay, now let's get into uh the next six articles of Chapter two. We'll read now Articles nineteen through twenty-four, alright? This is Chapter two, alright? So mother, if you can read Articles nineteen through twenty-four, that would be great.
Article twenty on nineteen. Every introduction of or attempt to introduce the prohibited merchandise shall make it liable to confiscation and further to the punishments and fines mentioned below which shall be pronounced by the competent jurisdiction. Article twenty. The introduction or attempt to introduce in a port open to commerce or through a custom house shall be punished. First degree by a fine of from five hundred to two thou- two thousand pesetas and additional fine equal to three times the value of the imported merchandise. Second degree by imprisonment of from five days to a year or else by only one or two, one of these two punishments. Article twenty-one. The introduction or attempt to introduce outside a port open to commerce or a custom house shall be punished. First degree by a fine of from one thousand to five thousand pesetas and additional fine equal to three times the value of the imported merchandise. Second degree by imprisonment of from three months to two years or else, else by only one of these two punishments. Article twenty-two. The fraudulent sale, the receiving and peddling of merchandise prohibited by the present regulations shall be punished according to the penalties specified in Article twenty. Article twenty-three. The accomplices in the offenses set forth in Articles twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two shall be liable to the same penalties as the principles. The elements determining complicity shall be adjudged according to the laws of the court in charge of the case. Article twenty-four. When there is good reason to suppose that a vessel anchored in a port open to commerce carries guns and ammunition or other prohibited merchandise with a view of introducing the same into Morocco, the officers of the Sharifian Customs shall so inform the competent consular authority in order that the latter may carry out in company with a delegate of the Sharifian Customs such investigations, verifications or searches as may be judged necessary.
Alright, thank you very much, mother. Alright, so, let's go back. Use your discernment. Obviously the articles are self-explanatory, right? They're basically self-explanatory. But let's go ahead and explain them anyway, okay? Let's just go over the treaty, right? This is NPAC study session. Let's just study, right? So we get the basic understanding, alright, about the treaty because treaty is supreme law of the land, alright? So Article nineteen. Every introduction of or attempt to introduce, so we're talking contraband, to prohibited merchandise shall make it liable to confiscation. So Moors can confiscate any weapons, any arms that do not have the required permits and licenses, right? And further to punishments and fines mentioned below which shall be pronounced by the competent jurisdiction. Now let's pause right here. We have to pause right here in Article nineteen because Article nineteen says a lot, alright? So let's examine what's happening here. Now it seems like just basic information, right? But here's what the Moors have to understand. When you start researching and understanding the case known as France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, right? When you go back and you look at page one ninety-seven, alright? So let's take a look at France versus United States of America. Page one ninety-seven, alright? So I'll show you. Page one ninety-seven, right? Which is the judge. Okay, so why, why are we going over this? I have to show the Moors something. Okay, so going back to your treaty. Act downstairs, Article nineteen. Article nineteen is talking about the competent jurisdiction, the competent jurisdiction. We have to spend a minute on this, okay? This is very important for Moors to understand. When you go to France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, what you quickly realize is that in France versus United States of America, and we're going to read this paragraph, right here. In France versus United States of America, the ICJ starts to point out particular articles, Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two and one nineteen. The ICJ was pointing out as, as it relates to consul jurisdiction. But they also were pointing out who has the competent consul jurisdiction. Well, they already knew by reading the treaties, it was supposed to be the Moors overseeing the treaty. But the Moors were not competent at the time in nineteen fifty or at the time of the judgment in nineteen fifty-two because the Moors had done what? Acquiesced by, by not returning to Morocco and consenting their allegiance to a Moroccan state government. So let's read this paragraph so that Moors can understand what the ICJ was saying as it relates to competency, competency of the Moors state governments, alright? Mother, can you start from the top?
In nineteen oh six, the twelve powers at Al Jazeera all exercised capitulatory rights and privileges to the extent that they were prescribed either by the General Treaty with Great Britain of eighteen fifty-six or by the Spanish Treaty of eighteen sixty-one. They did so by virtue of direct treaty grant, as in the case of Great Britain or Spain, or by virtue of most favored nation clauses, as in the case of the United States, or without treaty rights, but with the consent or acquiescence of Morocco, as in the case of certain other states. According to the Act of Al Jazeera presupposed existence, presupposed the existence of the regime of capitulations, including the rights of consul jurisdiction and many of its provisions assigned particular functions to the then existing Consular Tribunals. Reference has been made in the course of the argument to Articles nineteen to one nineteen.
Alright, so thank you very much, mother. So what's happening here? The ICJ is pointing out that the Moors had either consented or acquiesced of Morocco, had basically agreed to the acquiescence. What does acquiescence mean? That we agreed, that we did not reject. So we acquiesced. Morocco acquiesced, so either we consented or acquiesced, right? So consent means we signed treaties, agreeing to it, or we acquiesced because we remained silent and the acts, the breaches of treaty continued to happen because Morocco did not reject, right? So the ICJ is pointing out about what's called the regime of capitulations that the consul jurisdiction rights were usurped. And since the consul jurisdiction rights were usurped by capitulations, and we learned capitulation mean military law, right? Moors became prisoners of war. And that since we acquiesced and did not return to Morocco, that the United States of America or the Moors were supposed to, somebody according to the treaty was to, supposed to maintain conformity of the treaty. So as it relates to what's called consul jurisdiction, the ICJ started pointing out what? That the articles, the articles from nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two and one nineteen were articles that gave the Moors specific, specific delegation of authority order over consul court. However, since the Moors had acquiesced, then it immediately gave who? The delegation of authority order. It gave the United States. The United States ended up being the inheritor, the successor of the treaty to enforce the treaty articles as it relates to courts. And the United States at the time was the only competent authority because at least they were checking the boxes of statehood. And the Moors had been usurped through extreme hypothecation. But it was the Moors' obligations to get out of a status of acquiescence, that was our obligation. So, as we now start to read Article nineteen, keep in mind, Chapter two, Chapter two is Articles thirteen through thirty. So chapters, I mean Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-nine, which is five, one, two, three, four, five. Five of the consul court articles that the ICJ was pointing out that gave Moors delegation of authority orders over particular articles. Five of them are in Chapter two. Five out of fourteen, if you count all these, that's fourteen articles. Five of them are in Article two. Five out of fourteen articles that the ICJ pointed out. Why is it five out of fourteen all in Chapter two? Because the Sultan was trying to reign in the order of the weapons of mass destruction. Because the entire world was being usurped with arms. The colonists were using arms. So the Sultan who put this treaty together in Chapter two placed five articles, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-nine in Chapter two. Five out of fourteen articles are in Chapter two that give Moors delegation of authority orders over arms. That's very important to understand. That's not a subtlety. Don't, don't look at that like it's a minor thing. There's a reason why, they're trying to do what? Enforce the permits, the licenses. And if you violate the obligations of arms, especially as it relates to contraband, listen to me, Moors. As it relates to contraband arms, it's the obligation of Moors to prosecute anyone who's violating the law of the treaties or constitution of your internal legislation of that state. That's why there's five articles, five of them in Chapter two that talks about Moors enforcing the prosecution of anyone violating Moors law. Because we gotta keep control of these arms, alright? I just wanted to show the Moors the ICJ talks about this. Because Moors specialize in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, I gotta tell you. Articles twenty and twenty-one, right? Okay, what about that downstairs? Do you know those articles? The ICJ just pointed out the answers to the test, right? So it's Articles nineteen, but you can also add Article eight, a part of this, right? Article eight is a part of this, in my estimation. So Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two and one nineteen are the articles. The Moors should hone in. the Moors should hone in on to understand how to enforce Consular Court. Those are articles you go to, such as the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. All the Moors went straight to Articles twenty and twenty-one. My question to the Moors is, what articles do you go to in the Act of the First Series? Well, guess what the ICJ did? They gave you the answers to the test. That's what I'm trying to tell you. To control these arms. What type of arms? Contraband arms. What are the other type of arms? Arms that are legalized through permits and licenses. Alright, let's go back to Act of the First Series. Okay. What else is about Article nineteen that we need to understand? It talks about the competent jurisdiction, right? The competent jurisdiction gets to deal with punishments. So let's take it from the top. Every introduction of an attempt to introduce the prohibited merchandise shall make liable to confiscation, so Moors can take it, and further the punishments and fines mentioned below, which shall be pronounced by the competent jurisdiction. So the only Moors that can enforce confiscations, punishments, and fines are competent jurisdictions, i.e. competent Moors state governments. But what does competent mean? Okay. Let's take a look at it. This is very important. We have to understand what we're reading, Moors. Alright, Mother, can you read the definition of competent?
Duly qualified, answering all requirements, having sufficient ability or authority, possessing the requisite natural or legal qualifications, able, adequate, suitable, sufficient, capable, legally fit. Levy District versus Jamison.
Case law, okay, skip down.
See also competency.
Incompetency.
Incompetency.
Alright. So what are we learning immediately? For those Moors out there that's been studying with AMPAC Study Session for a while, your eyes should immediately start picking up on some of the key words here, right? We have to use discernment. When you read, the definition of read means to, to what? To comprehend, to use discernment, forensics, right? So those choice words here, you should already start recognizing quite quickly, alright? That's gonna help you with your studies, alright? Okay, let's focus on these words. Now, listen. Competent. Now, we've all been taught as Moors competent meant that you didn't know that you, you realized you wasn't black anymore, right? It made you competent because you were studying Moors science and you understood your needs, your nationality, et cetera. That's what we were all taught about competency. But that's not necessarily the full truth. That's the first stage of it. But there's different levels to competency, right? But what does law say? What does law say about competency? Let's learn. Duly qualified. Answering all requirements. Having sufficient ability or authority. Possessing the requisite natural or legal qualifications. Able, adequate, suitable, sufficient, capable, legally fit. Right? Now where do we see some of these choice words? This is what Moors gotta understand when they're reading the Blacks Law Dictionary. Don't just skim over words. Really try to figure out, where did you see these other words? That's what Moors have to start understanding. Okay, where do we see these other words? Such as the Treaty of Montevideo nineteen thirty-three, right? Article one. What does Article one say? Okay. Before we get to Article one in the preamble, this is just a short part of the preamble, right? For study purposes, short part. It says, who have to have exhibited their full powers, which were found to be in good and due order, have agreed upon the following, so the states who are signing this treaty had full powers. And, and upon examination, they were found to be in good and due order, meaning they, they had the emanating document of their governmental credentials, their constitution, et cetera. They could go right into enforcing Article one if they had full power. Look, full power is the state, right? So listen, Article one. The state as a person of intern, international law should possess the following qualifications. Okay, let's go back to competent. Duly qualified, qualifications. So competency is about what? What's competency about? Immediately you start, immediately start recognizing, competency is about having full powers and also understanding it's about statehood, because you must possess the qualifications of statehood. Okay, listen, competent. Competent, duly qualified. Answering all requirement. Are Moors answering all the requirements of statehood? Can Moors say they have their ratified, deposited, promulgated constitutions of each of the territory? Can Moors say they have their Moors state ID and not nationality cards? Moors have their live birth record through their state? Do they have their three branches of government? Are people now elected officials that stand up and take their oath and point at a Moors state court with the Moors judge? Can Moors answer the questions based upon the requirements of what? Statehood. In order to be competent, it means you're having sufficient ability or authority possessing the requisite natural or legal qualifications. Able, adequate, suitable, sufficient. What's able and adequate? What's able? You're able what? Because you have what? Able authority. You have the adequate authority. You have the suitable authority, right? You have sufficient authority and that you're capable, capable of maintaining the authority. And last but not least, you are legally fit. Remember, we talked about this word. Legally fit. Fit what? You fit all these requirements. What requirements? Okay, let's go back to the Treaty of Montevideo. What are the requirements? Okay. Article one, the state as a person of international law should possess the following qualifications which make you fit. Fit to do what? Maintain your duty, right? But what do you need? A permanent population, a defined territory, and a government, and a capacity to enter relations with other states, right? So let's go back to competency. You gotta be duly qualified. Competency means what? Competency means you need a state which gives you full powers because you have the emanating document, the paramount document called your constitution, Moors constitution of each of the territories. And then after that, you have an emanating document of your governmental credentials in order for you to be duly authorized, right? Duly qualified, duly authorized. But wait, it doesn't stop there. Let's continue. The Anticonvention on the Laws of Treaties nineteen sixty-nine. The law of what? Treaties. These are rules on how you deal with states as it relates to treaties and states, right? So then you go to Article two, Section C. Section C, full powers. Meaning document emanating from the competent authority. The competent authority. The competent authority. Full powers is the document emanating from the competent authority of a state. Okay, let's go back to competence. Because when Moors first started reading this definition, they thought competent meant that they knew they wasn't black no more. Uh-uh, it didn't stop there. There's more boxes, Moors, that you need to check. You need to understand that on the competency, you need to be duly qualified by being a Moors national that had returned to Morocco and pledged their consent back to a Moroccan state government. And after that, you become official of your state if you choose to do that, right? You got an emanating document. So you have to understand that in competent, they're giving you these choice, choice words. They're letting you know, get back on your own brick road and go back and look up words. Let's continue. So in the Anticonvention, for the competent authority of a state, designated a person or persons to represent the state. So Moors needed what? If this is a nationality card, this makes you what? Incompetent. The opposite of competent. This is a nationality card, not what? Emanating document. You needed an emanating, right? You need a document emanating from the competent authority of a state. And if this didn't come from a state, it makes it what? Nolan Boyd, makes it incompetent, the opposite. This is what I'm trying to tell Moors. Re, what? Designating a person or persons to represent the state. The nationality cards represent a state? No. Which makes our nationality cards incompetent. This is why the colonists tell you they don't recognize this. Why? Because no Moors state government recognized it. No Moors state government gave you this as the emanating document that represents the state. That's what makes you competent. Let's continue with the reading. From the top, full powers means a document emanating from the competent authority of a state, designated a person or persons to represent the state for negotiating, adopting, or authenticating the text of a treaty for expressing the consent of the state to be bound by a treaty or for, let's make this a little smaller. Make it a little smaller. Or for accomplishing any other act with respect to a treaty. So the Moors are trying to negotiate treaties. The Moors are telling the United States of America they enforced the constitution of the United States of America. But we don't even have state ID to even start talking about questioning someone else's jurisdiction. Well, we're not even competent ourselves with our own emanating document of the state. This is what Moors gotta start understanding, alright? Let's continue. So we're going back to your treaty. Act of the First Series nineteen oh-six. Talking about the competent jurisdiction. In order to have the competent jurisdiction in order to enforce confiscations, punishments, and fines, Moors have to be competent. And competent means what? Moors of a state. And then those officers of the state, right? Let's keep learning about competent. We gotta stay here for a minute. So from the top, competent, duly qualified, answering all requirements, having sufficient ability or authority, possessing the requisite natural or legal qualifications, able, adequate, suitable, sufficient, capable, legally fit. And what's this last sentence? See incompetency. Okay, now we're gonna look up incompetency. But before we do that, let's scroll on down. Look at the definition of competent authority. Because that's what treaty is about, right? Your delegation of authority orders. Okay, Mother, competent authority, please.
As applied to courts and public officers, this term imparts jurisdiction and due legal authority to deal with a particular matter in question.
Alright, thank you very much, Mother. Okay, from the top, competent authority. As applied to the courts and public officers, this term imparts jurisdiction and due legal authority to deal with the particular matter in question. So any matters that Moors are dealing with, any question that's being posed to Moors, well, the Moors should have the competent authority. What gives you the first competent authority? Well, your constitution, right? A Moors constitution. Let's take AMPAC's constitution as an example. This is the first emanating document, right? What would be the second emanating document if in fact you're dealing with the United States of America? Your state ID. This is the competent authority. Because authority is just identification, which is what? A friendly application, which is the mechanisms, right? That sets up the understanding to make you legally fit. Because you understand your legal obligations to make this suitable to deal with any other state. Let's continue. So the competent authority as applied to courts and public officers, this term imparts jurisdiction and due legal authority to deal with a particular matter in question. Okay, let's go back to the treaty. So every introduction, Article nineteen, every introduction of or attempt to introduce the prohibited merchandise shall make it, make it liable to confiscation and further to the punishments and fines mentioned below, which shall be pronounced by the competent jurisdiction. Okay, competent jurisdiction. Competent jurisdiction. So you need competent authority as applied to courts and public officers, this term imparts jurisdiction and due legal authority. Moors never had the legal authority to enforce the treaties. Moors never had the legal authority because we were incompetent. We did not follow the instructions of our own treaties. We never had the legal authority without our own Moors constitutions and our three branches of government and the emanating document known as proper identification. That must be understood. Okay. As we already learned on the definition of competent. Definition of competent. Almost passed by. On the definition of competent, it said, see also incompet, incompetency, right? We gotta stay here for a minute more. Moors have always told people that were Negro, Black, and Color, and African American, that they were incompetent. Because they say, oh, you guys are Black, you think you're Black, you're incompetent, right? What does incompetency mean? Mother?
Lack of ability, legal qualification, or fitness to discharge their required duty. In R.E. Leonard's, oh.
Okay, this is a holdup by the mother.
Case law.
Yeah, with, with a holdup by the mother. Alright, so the first thing that we're reading about incompetency is what? Lack of ability. Legal lack qualification or fitness to discharge the required duty. Read again, incompetency. Means lack of ability, legal qualification, or fitness. So you're doing what? Read it like this. Lack of ability, right? Lack of legal qualification, and lack of fitness to discharge the required duty. That's incompetency. What duty? This is the duty. This is the duty. To have full powers. That was your duty, Moors. To have full powers. But in order to have full powers, you needed what? A state. Because you had the obligations to do what? Possess the qualifications. And what are the qualifications? Permanent population, a defined territory, government, and the capacity to enter relations with other states. And you can't enter into relations with other states unless you have what? Your own state with full powers. Right? The Anticonvention nineteen sixty-nine, what did it say? As it relates to what? Incompetency, right? Lack of ability. Lack of legal qualification. And that you have a lack of fitness to discharge the required duty. So incompetency meaning that you could not fulfill the obligations of the Anticonvention nineteen sixty-nine, Article two, Section C, which is full powers. Moors were lacking, lacking full powers. We were incompetent because we didn't have the emanating document. We were incompetent because we didn't have the emanating documents. From the competent authority of what? The state. Because the state was designated a person or persons to represent the state. For negotiating, for adopting, for authenticating the text of a treaty. It was for the expressing the consent of the state is what gave you full powers. To be bound by a treaty. Or for accomplishing any other act with respect to a treaty. So Moors were incompetent. Because we were not the competent authority of a state. Which automatically made us incompetent. Because we lacked the ability. Because we lacked legal qualification. Because we lacked fitness. Fitness to do what? To discharge the qualified duty. See the word fitness? Where do we see that word fitness? On the definition of competent. Right? Legally fit. To be competent, you're legally fit. And if you're not legally fit, that makes you what? Incompetent because you're not fit. Fit to do what? To carry out the ability of the legal qualifications. That's required for the duty enforcing statehood. So all this time, the Moors thought Negro blacks and colors was incompetent because they didn't know their nationality, they didn't know their history. But the reality is these definitions about who? Moors subjects who had failed to return to Morocco to consent their allegiance to a Moroccan state government. That's what incompetency was about. Ninety-nine percent of Moors have been incompetent. And that's the truth. But we gotta fix it. How do we fix it? Well, we have to be competent based upon us having, being fit. We have to be fit, mentally fit. We have to fit into the society of statehood, alright? Let's continue. So this is Anpack's study session, right? We're studying, we're understanding what do these words mean? Why do I have this highlighted? You must understand, listen, Moors, listen. In nineteen fifty-two, the ICJ pointed out to the Moors, you Moors. Under Article nineteen, if you're not competent, you can't enforce it. If you're incompetent because you are still acquiesced, you can't enforce Article nineteen. This is why I'm pointing this out to the Moors. The ICJ is leading the Moors and y'all can't take no shortcuts. Don't cheat the process, Moors. There are no shortcuts. You have to check the boxes in order to be able to enforce the Act of the Sarahs nineteen oh six. Chapter two, Articles thirteen, eighteen, any articles. This is what Moors gotta understand. Article nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, etc. are giving you the answer to the test only if you're what? Competent. Let's continue. From the top, Article nineteen. Every introduction of or attempt to introduce the prohibited merchandise. Shall make it liable to confiscation and further to the punishment and fines. Mentioned below which shall be pronounced by the competent jurisdiction. Or the ICJ say you can't enforce it as Moors if you ain't competent. And what is competency? Statehood. Let's continue. Article twenty, introduction or attempt to introduce imported open to commerce or through a custom house shall be punished. That's the delegation authority orders. Moors have no choice but to punish those who try to introduce contraband. And what makes you contraband is not license or permit, right? So number one, by a fine, these are the fines, from a fine from five hundred to two thousand per cent. Now remember, this is nineteen oh six. So the value of a dollar or, or currency has gone up since then, right? So don't, don't pay attention really to the, to the amount, it's just the action, right? The action that there's a fine taking place in Peru. By applying from five hundred to two thousand per cent. And an additional fine equal to three times the value of the imported merchandise. That's the fine, three times, right? Number two, by imprisonment. Of from five days to a year. Or else by only one of these two punishments. So Moors have a delegation authority order to put people in jail. For what? Having contraband arms. Alright? Article twenty-one, introduction or attempt to introduce outside a port open to commerce. Or a custom house shall be punished by a fine of from one thousand to five thousand per cent. And an additional fine equal to three times the value of imported merchandise. Number two, by imprisonment or from three months to two years. Or else by only one of these two punishments, right? It's telling who what to do. It's telling the constable court judge, right? These are prerequisites based upon the law of some of the time and penalties that can be issued out. Right? So this is talking about doing time and a fine. What does that tell you? This is listed under criminal, not civil. This is criminal. It's criminal to have contraband arms. And the Moors have a delegation authority orders to punish and imprison and find anyone who breaks the law. Let's continue. Article twenty-two. The fraudulent sale. The receiving and peddling of merchandise prohibited. By the present regulation shall be punished according to the penalties specified in Article twenty. So what does that tell you? You know how some people have what they call the gun shows? Moors have to understand, we had to get control over the arms. Everything considered contraband of arms if Moors did not issue a license or permit for you to have it, period. Let's read Article twenty-two again. The fraudulent sale. The receiving and peddling of merchandise prohibited by the present regulation. Shall be punished according to the penalties specified in Article twenty. Article twenty-three. The accomplices and the offenses set forth in Articles twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Shall be liable to the same penalties as the principles. The elements determining complicity shall be adjudged according to the laws of the court. In charge of the case, right? So keep in mind, this is Article twenty-three. I have the court highlighted, right? Alright, let's go back to. France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two. Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-nine, what we'll be reading, right? So right now, we're reading what? What, what are we reading right now? Twenty-three, right? So the ICJ pointed out to the Moors, twenty-three, right? So we're reading over twenty-three right now. So on twenty-three, the ICJ pointed out, you Moors need to use your courts to deal with what? Punishments. Cause this is a crime as it relates to contraband arms. Anything that's prohibited, right? Let's read Article twenty-three again. The accomplices and the offenses set forth in Articles twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Shall be liable to the same penalties as the principles. That's an important sentence. Did you catch what just happened? Notice the principle is notice to the agent. Notice to the agent is notice to the principal, you see? You gotta understand what's happening here. That's why it talks about a accomplice, right? How do you, how do you now get control? You have to take out the principals, the head of these departments who are controlling. And giving orders for people to do wrong with these contrabands. That's for the gun stores, right? That's military complex, complex, police departments, etc. Moors have to understand, this is the supreme law of the land. And the notice to the agent is notice to your principal, chief of police. And notice to the chief of police is notice to your agent, i.e. your police officer. When you're dealing with the United States. However, it's also notification to Moorish nationals. Moorish nationals also have to be in conformity of this treaty. And Moorish nationals can't run around being belligerent and having contraband either. We gotta rein in the order on both sides, alright? Article twenty-four, in which the ICJ pointed out. Article twenty-four. When there is good reason to suppose that a vessel anchored in a port open to commerce carries guns. Ammunition, or other prohibited merchandise. With the view of introducing the same into Morocco. The officers of the Sharifian Customs shall so inform the competent consul authority. In order that the latter may carry out in company with the delegate of the Sharifian Customs. Such investigation, verification, or research as may be judged necessary. So what's happening? If the United States of America or any vessel sitting in our ports is trying to bring in contraband arms. The Moors governments have every right to perform verification and inspection, right? Confiscation. And even arbitration and adjudication of anyone attempting to introduce contraband arms, right? That's what Moors gotta start seeing. Okay, Article twenty-four, right? That's Article twenty-four. The ICJ said, Moors, you need to use twenty-four, okay? Let's go back to your treaty. We want to take our time. Alright. Article twenty-five, the ICJ pointed out Article twenty-five. Okay, Article twenty-five. In the case of the introduction or the attempted introduction. By sea or prohibited merchandise outside of a port open to commerce. The Moorish Customs Authorities may bring the vessel to the nearest port. To be turned over to the Consular Authority. Who shall have the right to seize it and continue such seizure and to the payment of the fines decreed. The vessel may however, be released at any period of the trial. Provided that the judicial proceedings shall not be impeded thereby. Or deposit made with the Consular Authority of the maximum of the fine. Or else under reasonable bail accepted by the customs. You see what's happening here? So this is all about the Moors having a delegation authority orders. To receive all contraband arms, confiscation, right? To seize arms. Take people through the due process of law. Cause that's your delegation authority orders to protect the homeland. To make sure that no belligerent tenant, resident, occupier, occupant. Is having arms that are contraband. If they're filed with contraband. An illegal substance such as arms of war or arms of sport without a permit, without a license. They can be adjudicated. They can be prosecuted under the laws of the Moorish government. Let's continue. This, this is kind of self-explanatory. Article twenty-six, the Ma'azin may retain. The confiscated merchandise either for its own use. If able to utilize it on condition that the subjects of the empire should not be able to get possession of it. Or shall dispose of it abroad. The conveyances of the same on the shore may be confiscated and shall be sold for the profit of the Sharifian Treasury. Okay. So as, as Moors recognize, we, we read past Article twenty-four, but we just gonna keep going, right? Um, Article twenty-six, the Ma'azin may retain the confiscated merchandise. Either for its own use, listen. So when the Moors confiscate contraband arms. That don't have permits and licenses, the Moors can confiscate, seize it, and keep it. Listen. Take it from the top. The Ma'azin may retain the confiscated merchandise either for its own use. If able to utilize it. On condition that the subjects of the empire shall not be able to get possession of it. Remember I told you, the parties must be known. The subjects of Morocco are not allowed to have the weapons without a permit or a license. Now do you see, Moors, why they've always treated these people they call their colors the way they treat them? They're forcing these treaties because the subjects of Morocco are not allowed to have. Arms that are contraband without a license. You see what's happening? They reverse these treaties on us. I'll say it again, the subjects, who are the subjects? Moors that have not returned to Morocco and consented their allegiance to a Moroccan state government. Let's take it from the top. Article twenty-six, the Ma'azin may retain the confiscated merchandise. Either for its own use, so Moors can retain it and use it. If able to utilize it on condition that the subjects of the empire should not be able to get possession of it. You see what happened? The United States and other colonial states didn't want their, their slaves, right? Conotative slaves, their subjects to get access to these weapons, right? So subjects are not allowed to have weapons without permits, licenses. Let's continue. So the subjects of the empire should not be able to get possession of it. Or it shall dispose of it abroad. The conveyances of the same on the shore may be confiscated. And shall be sold for the profit of the Sharifian Treasury. Let's read that again. The conveyances of the same on the shore may be confiscated. What's the conveyances? The vessels. And anything that's conveyance carrying what? Contraband arms. Can be what? The conveyance of the same on the shore may be confiscated and shall be sold. For the profit of the Sharifian Treasury. So we got an option, we can keep and use it, and we can sell it and make a profit. You see what's happening? That's called delegation authority orders. This is how much power the Moors have, only if the Moors are what? Competent. We have been incompetent. But now we're returning to statehood, we'll enforce our delegation of authority orders. Article twenty-seven. The sale of arms condemned by the Moorish government. Shall be prohibited throughout the Sharifian Empire. I'll say it again. Article twenty-seven. The sale of arms condemned by the Moorish government. Shall be prohibited throughout the Sharifian Empire. I'll read it again. Article twenty-seven, the sale of arms condemned by the Moorish government. Shall be prohibited throughout the Sharifian Empire. So. Moors can say certain types of arms can be prohibited based upon our law. Certain types of arms, and arms vary from handguns all the way to what? Automatic weapons as well as what? Atomic bombs, right? Hydrogen bombs, etc. These are all arms, arms of war and arms of sport. But who can enforce this? Competent Moor state governments. That's it. Let's continue. Article twenty-eight, rewards taken out of the amount of the fines. Leaving are to be given to the informants. Who have been instrumental in discovering forbidden merchandise. And the agents who have affected its seizure. Such rewards shall be assigned after deducting, if necessary, the cost of the trial, one-third to be distributed by the customs among the informants, one-third to the officers who seized the merchandise, and one-third to the Moroccan Treasury. If the seizure has been affected without the intervention of an informer, one-half of the fines shall go to the officer making the seizure and the other half to the Sharifian Treasury. Now you see how they're using this word Sharifian and Moroccan? You must understand, Moroccan Treasury and Sharifian Treasury are synonyms. Understand, when they write these treaties, they're using language because you got different dynasties, they use different words to label things, right? So they're trying to use all the words that way they're covering all their faces. But we all know that the Moroccan Treasury and the Sharifian Treasury is what? The Moors Treasury. Right? Alright, Article twenty-nine. The Moors Customs Authorities shall notify directly the diplomatic or consular agents of any violations of this regulation committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that the same may be prosecuted before the proper jurisdiction. Okay, Article twenty-nine. What about Article twenty-nine? Okay. The ICJ pointed out, you Moors that are competent enforce Article twenty-nine. Okay, going back to the treaty. From the top. Article twenty-nine, the Moors Customs Authorities shall notify directly the diplomatic or consular agents of any violations of this regulation committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that the same may be prosecuted before the proper jurisdiction. Similar violations committed by Moors subjects. Similar violations committed by the Moors subjects. Similar violations committed by the Moors subjects shall be submitted directly by the customs to the Sharifian Authority. Now wait a minute. Do you see what just happened? They just pointed out Moors subjects and Moors authority. Two separate, separate classifications. The subjects are who? Citizens of the United States of America that go by the non-negier, right, the misnomer of Negro, black, colored, African-American, and Moors American. Those are your Moors subjects according to the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the United States. Article three, right? Section two, clause one, talks about subjects. Your treaties talk about subjects. So when Moors subjects violate the law, they have to deal with the Sharifian Authority. Who's the Sharifian Authority? The competent Moors of the Moors state government. So the Moors state government and their competent officers of the state have jurisdiction over Moors subjects where there's violations of contraband arms. That must be understood. This is what Moors gotta understand. Which side of the contract are you on, Moors? You're a Moors subject or you're part of the Sharifian Authority, which is the Moors authority? The competent Moors. Incompetent Moors? Competent Moors. Incompetent Moors? Competent Moors. And what's they, what, 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 what is this called? Political status. What is your political status according to constitutions and treaties? We, we really need to pay attention to this right here. It is in your treaty, Moors, to underscore two classifications of Moors right there. That's also in Article eight, two classifications of Moors. This is why I'm trying to tell the Moors the word Moors is a generic word. The question is, what is your political status? Are you a competent Moor or incompetent Moor? Are you a Moors national or are you a Moors subject? Are you a Moors national or you're a Moors protege? I.e. a citizen of the United States that's classified in a treaty as a Moors subject. Let's read it again. Similar violations committed by Moors subjects shall be submitted directly by the customs to the Sharifian Authority. Let's continue. A delegate of the customs shall be assigned to follow the procedure of cases pending before the different jurisdictions. So this is Article twenty-nine, right? Look what the ICJ pointed out. Article twenty-nine. So the United States of America, the United States has been enforcing Article twenty-nine on who? Moors? Subjects. Moors subjects. You see what's happening, Moors? The United States and the United States of America is enforcing the treaties on Moors. What kind of Moors? Moors subjects. Because that's what the treaty says. And the ICJ was pointing it out, in the ICJ. If the United States of America gets to enforce Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two, and one nineteen against who? Moors that have acquiesced in Morocco. That's the truth. It's in your treaty and in the constitution that you keep telling them to enforce. Alright. We get to Article thirty. We're starting to wrap up. Article thirty. In the region bordering on Algier, Algeria, the enforcement of the regulations on the contraband of arms shall be exclusive concern of France and Morocco. Similarly, the enforcement of the regulations on the contraband of arms in the river and in general in the regions bordering on the Spanish possessions shall be the exclusive concern of Spain and Morocco. Alright? So that's the, the end of the reading of chapter two. What is chapter two about? Okay, let's go back to the board again as we wrap up. Chapter two, Articles thirteen through thirty, is about competent Moors state governments in the repression of contraband arms of war and arms of sport. Chapter two is about competent Moors governments enacting legislation to govern the permits and licenses of the foreigners, subjects, and proteges throughout the empire of Morocco. So if Moors want to get their sovereignty back, if Moors want peace because they want justice, and they'll tell you, no justice, no peace. Well, Moors, the entire time have a treaty that extends in the sovereign authority, the delegation of authority order through a treaty, a treaty supreme law of the land to get justice and peace by controlling contraband arms. And by that way, and that way only, can Moors control their intentional future of getting their peace in Morocco by controlling the arms. That must be understood, Moors. Most importantly, your treaty continues to point out that you are a Moors subject if in fact you have acquiesced remaining as a naturalized person in the United States. If you have failed to return to Morocco by consent of utilizing application through the Moors state, having a Moors judge now be a witness to you being Kendrick B. That means you're still a subject of the United States. So Moors have to understand, we have a delegation of authority orders to enforce the treaties to help Kendrick Johnson and Kendrick B to become competent. I am with that, Islam.